All right. Good afternoon to everyone watching and to the candidates who are running for Caddo Parish School Board. My name is Kirsten and my co-host here today is Calvin Alexander will be hosting today's panel. We serve as the co-chairs of the People's Promise Youth Division, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit based in Shreveport, Louisiana. We have advocated for the youth on the local and state level since being founded in October of 2021. The People's Promise Youth Division believes in uplifting and empowering our youth through three main methods, volunteerism, education, and legislative advocacy. The People's Promise Youth Division does not condone nor endorse any candidate or party, but we believe in bringing civic education to the youth and to the people of Shreveport. We are very excited to hear from these candidates who are taking their time to share their thoughts about the youth in Shreveport and their campaigns.
Great. Thanks Kirsten. And thank you so much to all the candidates for being here today. Let's start by allowing each candidate to introduce themselves and the district they're running for. Each candidate will be given a maximum of three minutes to tell them, tell us more about themselves and their campaign. So we will start in order of district. So Ms. Newsom, we'll give you three minutes to share more. Let me get the stream situated. And your time will begin whenever I'm removed from the, from the stream.
There we go. Okay. Hi, I'm Kisha Newsom. I'm candidate for Caddo Parish School Board for District One. I have a son who is eight years old. He has autism and I'm making it my mission to be his voice. The way that I can make sure I do that is to run for public office in a way that's going to impact his education. In doing so, I also want to be an advocate for other children. I plan to be the voice for the children who have no voice, the voice for the parent who doesn't know how to accurately use their voice to get the results that are necessary, and the voice for the teachers who are saying that they're not being heard. The only way that I know to make sure that I can make a change and a lasting impact is to do what I'm asked to do and do what I feel like I'm led to do, which is to fight for my kid and your kids. So I'm telling the people that I'm, I'm hoping to represent that I am here for you and will fight for you and yours if you will join the fight with me. I'm the town clerk for the town of Little City, been there 10 years. Today actually is my 10 year anniversary. So I have a lot of political experience, experience with budgets and that sort of thing. I want to make it a point to mention that I am a parent, not a politician. I do have political experience, but I am just like you, you moms, you dads who struggle to make, make it to every event at the school, to get the homework done, to get your work done, the doctor's appointments and all the things that come along with being parents. So I just want to reiterate that again. I am a parent, not a politician. My goal is to represent the people who choose me as their representative in a manner that will satisfy the parents. I want to be able to show that the board is listening and the way that you make sure that you show you are listening is to communicate. I plan to go into the, the board room and make relation, make relationships with the people who are running the board with me. And to be able to get to know each other outside of the confines of the boardroom to where we can understand each other on a level that will open up communication. I believe if you have a true interest in someone, then you can have a more open ear, open mind to what it is that they have to say. I see lots of ways that the school system needs help and I think it's time for us parents to be the ones to step up. We can continue to say they ought to, but the really, the realization of we are the village, we need to be the ones to be the change. Let's step up. Let's parent up.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Newsom. Really great to have you share that with us. So now we'll be moving on to our District Seven candidate, Mr. Darren Dixon. Let me... Hello, hello. Can you, can you hear me?
Sure, I can hear you.
I can hear you too. So, once I'm left from the stream, your time will start.
Good afternoon. My name's Darren Dixon. I'm the school board representative for District Seven, also running for reelection for that particular seat. I've been serving for the last almost year and a half under capacity of, of school board member, replacing Mr. Raymond Green who retired early because of health reasons. I am excited about this opportunity to have served. It's been quite a learning experience over the past year and a half. It's been kind of a, a training, on the job training, if you will, learning the operations, learning the budgets, learning the processes, learning the policies, and, and more importantly, working and getting to know the people in the schools at the school level. And for this past year, I've tried to be a resource to principals, to the schools, leveraging my relationships to help give them added resources for things that they don't have budgets for. One particular instance is one day a principal called me and kids didn't have coats. And, and I shared, and within minutes I got enough money to buy more coats than they needed, within a few minutes. So I want to continue to utilize my relationships to help the schools, want to continue to use my experience. I worked, worked for Southern for right at 20 years, helping businesses grow as the, the director of the Small Business Development Center. And now I'm the VP of Operation at Winfield Funeral Home Companies. So I want to continue to use the, the experience I have from a business perspective to add a business perspective to the board. They have the good mix of, of different backgrounds and professions, for the most part, former educators. I think I bring a different perspective with a business background. What I've been concerned about most, and no different than Ms. Newsom, is trying to be a voice for those that feel voiceless. There are some folk that have access, but there's so many people that don't have access. And as a school board member, we're supposed to be the conduit between the community, between parents and people in the community and the administration. I feel like over the past year and a half, I've done just that, been a voice for those that feel voiceless, been a voice for those that feel like their voice just isn't heard at the school district. So I want to continue that and then continue to fight for equity, if you will, in education for all kids. So I'm looking forward to answering questions later.
Thank you so much, Mr. Dixon. That was really meaningful for you to share, for you to share that with us. So now we'll move on to Ms. Glover, candidate for District 10. Let me add her to the stream. Can you hear me? You're muted, you're muted.
Now.
Great, okay. I'll remove myself from the stream and we'll get started.
I want to first thank the People's Youth Division for inviting me to this forum. It is indeed a pleasure. As a one who has steward and stands before the board on numerous of occasions imploring, imploring accountability from our board members, who in turn will implore the superintendent to be accountable to them. We've not made a lot of strides. Too many schools still, no matter how it came to be, are labeled DNFs. And those schools, though they're the brick and mortar, those children make up those scoops. And when it is that children in the 21st century aren't equipped or are not gaining skills that will help them to become equipped to be in this society that we're in today, we're disadvantaging those children. My intended purpose has been, and I am a retired employee of the Caddo Parish School System, worked there for 24 years as a secretary. First in the attendance department, that's how I know a lot about what's going on with regards to policies and things that affect the children. Then I worked in the maintenance department. I know about, a lot about what's going on with the buildings and how we continue to pour in good money behind bad money. You know, it's almost like that instance where you put new wine in an old bottle, it breaks. At some point, we're going to have to stop wasting those dollars because 85% of that $500 million budget goes to employees and benefits and the buildings. 15% goes to the educating of students. That's a sad commentary. Now, I'm a mother of four who have all graduated from the Caddo Parish School System and I have two grandchildren in the system today. And I want to be the voice for those who live in District 10, but not just District 10, parish wide. Because when a concern comes before me, I will take the concern to the superintendent and I will indeed insist that an answer is given and I will come back to the people with that answer. I too want to take a different approach that when parents or whomever constituents, stakeholders come before the board with a question, I'm not going to send you outside to speak to someone to the side. You need to have that answer in that setting so that it will be a matter of record. We need to take better care of what we are being entrusted to do. The budget, number one, policies, and all both of those will bring about the need or the access to ensuring our children are educated with those basic skills. We're just not doing a good job. And whether the board members today appreciate it or not, this is where we are.
Thank you so much, Ms. Glover. Thank you so much. So now that the speeches have concluded, I'll hand it over to Kirsten, who will start the question and answer session. We'll go in order of district. So starting with Ms. Newsom, then Mr. Dixon, then Ms. Glover, and then we'll rotate the order, starting with Mr. Dixon and then starting with Ms. Glover. So let me add Ms. Kisha to the, to the screen and then I'll let Kirsten take it away.
Thank you, Cal. And thank you to all our candidates for giving their great speeches. I'm going to start the question and answer session and I will address my first question to Ms. Newsom first. Our first question is, tell us about your previous experiences with working with young people or the education system?
Okay. I raised the niece of mine for 10 years and she had IEPs. I dealt with the school system with her intimately, all the class meetings, meetings with the professionals at the school. And also I have many years of experience working in children's ministry in churches. That's a lot of hands-on experience. And I think that if you want to make a difference in a child's life, you have to be willing to get down in the nitty gritty with them. You, if you can't change the environment they live in, then you can try to change the environment of their mind. And the only way to do that is to spend actual time. It's getting harder for the teachers to do that with everything they have going on. And I think that's where a lot of the issues are arising from, is there's not enough time to communicate with the peoples.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Newsom. Let us welcome Mr. Dixon to the stream to answer this question.
Could you repeat the question?
Yes, sir. The question is, can you tell us about your previous experiences with working with young people and the education system?
Thank you. I've, I've done a lot of volunteer work over the years, ever since I was younger, not just in this parish. I've only lived in Caddo for 20 years, but even prior to moving here, I've been active with educational system. In my hometown, I, I started a booster club for the athletic programs in, in Lake Providence and raised money to provide additional things for athletes, for the football team, basketball team, a band, in, in those extracurricular activities, as well as volunteered, doing the public announcement at football game, being the scorer at basketball games, keeping the scorebook for them on, even on games that were away. Here locally, I've been involved for at least 10 years, then junior achievement. Going into the schools, working with them on entrepreneurship, training and, and, and teaching and helping them develop a business plan. So I've been very active with the schools, you know, most of my adult life, basically all my adult life.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Our next candidate that will be answering this question is Ms. Glover.
Sorry, I had to unmute myself. Was indeed blessed to be able to work in the attendance department whereby I had that intimate relationship when parents came in with children who had concerns, issues that needed to be addressed, being able to, to get the information and get it to the appropriate personnel to address. What I've learned in that course of the direction is that oftentimes fingers are pointed at parents saying parents are not responsible. But it's not always parents that are not responsible. It is sometimes the children are not responsible, but parents get that right nonetheless. When it is that we learn and we listen and we hear what parents are saying, here's, here's a situation. I need your help to help me to avoid or to be able to embrace what I need to do to help my child to do better. Then that is when it shows that both of us are helping that child to understand, but two, having the conversation with the child, helping him to understand or she to understand, you have to be accountable for your choices. We can always justify or try to excuse some of your behavior, but we don't need to teach you that. We need you to teach you responsibility and we need to teach you accountability. Now, I've had an opportunity to work within my congregation with young folk, teaching Bible studies. And then outside of that, I have two grandchildren that I'm ever on about, are you maintaining your grades? Are you doing what you need to do? Can I assist you in what we need to get done? So it's not that we're not apart, we just are doing the best we can from the perspectives that are available to us.
Thank you, Ms. Glover. Thank you. So now with that question having been wrapped up, we'll move on to our next question. And this time we'll start with Mr. Dixon. So let me add you to the stream. Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Our next question is, in your opinion, what is the ultimate purpose of receiving quality education? What are the main values that you will hold while serving on the school board?
Well, the ultimate value of, of, of gaining a quality education is to prepare you to be able to function in life. Not everybody will get a job. Some folk will be entrepreneurs, start businesses. And some folk will go into the workforce. But education provides the foundation for people to function once they become adults. Eventually, children have children, so they'll be able to help and prepare their children in terms of educational pursuits. So it provides the foundation. Now, the second question is, ask, what values do I take to the school board? Am I correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay. What, what values I take? Well, I value integrity and value honesty, those, and transparency. Those are the three things that are important for elected officials. I'm a man of integrity. I'm not a man that's perfect, but I certainly have integrity. And I, and, and for the most part, I try to be honest, you know, all my constituents and the public, whether I agree or disagree with, with them in some instances, because there are going to be instances that you don't agree. But I, I, I try to operate and, and serve from a standpoint of honesty because when people can trust you, then they, they'll be able to depend on you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Dixon. Thank you. Thank you. So now on to Ms. Glover. And let me give you the question. Let me see, you're muted. And let me give you the question one more time.
Thank you.
In your opinion, what is the ultimate purpose of receiving quality education? And with that, what are the main values that you will hold while serving on the school board and how are those related?
Ultimate purpose for serving on the school board or even dealing with the quality of education is of the utmost. In our society, if one is not educated, he is disadvantaged from the job. We can't afford that. Quality education is essential. A child has to learn to read, write, and do math. If that child has not and does not gain that, that is disadvantaging for that child, but more so for the parent and then us as a part of the society. Because when we let children out unprepared, we're going to deal with the consequences of what we didn't do as good stewards of what we were entrusted to do. As being, as far as my character, my character will always demonstrate God in golliness. It will not be an if and a but about it. When issues are brought before me, I will always remember to whom I represent first, and that's God. Then I will represent the people who have entrusted me to represent them and their children. Issues come about, we will address them with respect, with dignity, and we will bring forth a camaraderie whereby we can all be on the same page when we have issues and concerns. We have a PPP plan that disadvantages children out of the gate. We need to get rid of that.
Thank you, Ms. Glover. Thank you. And I apologize for any noise in my background. But now on to Ms. Newsom.
Okay.
Let me just, let me give the question one more time. In your opinion, what is the ultimate purpose of receiving quality education and what are the main values that you will hold while serving on the school board?
Okay, a quality education is what I consider to be the basics, first off and foremost. When we don't have the basics in place for our children, the foundation, building blocks, they're just not going to be able to succeed. And as Ms. Johnny alluded to, you know, the PPP plan, I'm not seeing how that's even being successful with children in my own environment that I deal with on a daily basis. I see kids just getting pushed through, which we all know, if you do not have a quality education, then you're not going to understand the importance of everyday life necessities like civil engagement. How does civil engagement affect, affect our economy, our day-to-day living? Those kinds of things, I don't know if they're being expressed in a way that's going to captivate the children's attention to make them realize the importance of those things. I think that could be changed by having more, well, we can get into that another day. But what I can bring, what I'm going to be bringing to the board, of course, is honesty and integrity, but I also am going to bring my heart. I'm going to bring my heart, my loyalty to what it is that I'm trying to do. I might not have the answers to these questions. I might not even know all the questions until I'm there, but I have a fierceness about me that's always ready to tackle whatever needs to be done.
Thank you, Ms. Newsom. Thank you, Ms. Newsom. I'll hand it over to Kirsten for the next set of questions, which will start with Ms. Glover.
Thank you, Cal. Okay, so our next question is, did you grow up under Caddo Parish Public Schools or another maybe private school system? And how has that experience in the school system influenced your ideals today?
No, I did not grow up under Caddo Parish School Systems. I went to school in Richland Parish. What I was taught from the beginning, from the home, then to the classroom, a re, interating of what was involved from the home. Education was key. I grew up during the time of segregation where it was that we got what was left and we made it work. We made it work so much so that now today I can actually stand here or sit here and say that education indeed is important and it is of the utmost that we, we ensure that every boy and girl who attends our public school system is prepared for their future. Now I'm going to step in and ask, what was the second half of that question?
The second half of the question was, how has your experience in the school system influenced your ideals today?
Because of what I saw, that I wasn't appreciative of, too many kids being left behind. It gave me the courage to step forth. You know, had been an employee of the Caddo Public School System, you are told in no uncertain terms, you don't come before this board complaining. Well, I did that because it was important for me to let them hear my voice, not just as an employee, but as a constituent, a stakeholder, and a taxpayer. I'm investing, but my return is not of worth. So now I'm holding you accountable to help us to get what we need to and can appreciate our return on our investment. Right now, the return is not as well as it should be. And yes, we are successful. We have magnet schools, but we don't have to have magnet schools for children to, to be successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glover. So now I'll add Ms. Newsom to the stream.
Okay, yes, I did grow up in Caddo Parish. I grew up in northern Caddo Parish, which is District One district that I'm hoping to represent. I'm a hometown girl. I was born and raised in Oil City. I graduated from North Caddo High School in 1999. And I've remained in this area my entire life because Caddo really is home. Attending North Caddo High School, I, back in 99, I saw three different levels of students, if you will. So the class that I was in, let's just use English class, for example, we had the newest books. And then there was a class after me that had, you know, the last year's books. And then there was a class later in the day that had books that had been there years and years and years and was falling apart and they had to stay in the classroom. Now, this was 20 plus. Now, this was 20-plus years ago that they probably don't even really use books to stream anymore. Now it's computers and that type of thing. But I wonder if those differences still exist. And I'm hearing that they do even by school. Some of the schools that should be the schools to catch up, people maybe are not getting what they need. And then to give a school resources based on the attendance and things like that, when there are sometimes extenuating circumstances that are not the school's fault as to why children are not able to be at school. I'm hearing that as well. So I see a lot of things being ruled. It's often felt like we are forgotten, and I'm here to put Vivian in North Caddo Parish on that.
Thank you, Ms. Newsom. And lastly, we'll be hearing from Mr. Dixon.
I'm going to ask you to repeat the question so I can make sure I give you the correct answer. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Can you repeat that question for me, Christian?
Oh, yes, I can. Did you grow up under Caddo Parish Public Schools or another public or private school system? And how has your experience in the school system influenced your ideals today?
No, I didn't grow up in Caddo like Ms. Glover. I'm a transplant here. I grew up in the school district in East Cal Parish, a very rural, very poor parish. But, and I graduated some 35 years ago this year from high school. But we had a whole lot of vocational programs. I did agriculture, economics, and agriculture vocationally in high school. And being a part of ag taught me a lot of things. One of the things that did was taught leadership, where we learned parliamentary procedure. We learned how to run meetings and run organizations. And that has carried me a long ways as being a leader. And then being a small school, it was more intimate in terms of the learning. Now, did everybody do well? No. But everybody had the capacity to learn when I was in school. And understanding that from being in school gives me appreciation at this point in life that every kid has the capacity to learn. With the right resources, with the right attention, they can do well. What I want to do as a school board member in this capacity is make sure that all the schools have the same capacity and the same resources that in the school and that they are equitable, where there are schools that are having even more challenges, that they are equipped with even more resources to bring them up to the level where everybody else is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. So now with that question wrapped up, I'll let Kirsten ask the next question, which will start with Ms. Newsom.
Thank you, Cal. Okay, so our next question is, have you seen positive changes with our current school system compared to the school system when you were younger?
Well, I want to say yes, but I also want to say no. I see that there's still a lot of the same issues as far as kids not being included and excluded and bullying and all those things are still going on, maybe even more prevalent. Maybe we're just hearing more about it. But I truly think that that starts at home. When we have conversations around our dinner table that or in our car on cell phone with our best friend, that our kids really don't need to be hearing us talk about. Other parents, well, you know, what are they going to do, go to school and do the same exact thing? We have to be the ones to do better, to show different. I see that, I feel like my generation is starting to wake up. And I see that y'all's generation is seeming to be awake. And those are the things that I feel like is a little bit different. I feel like there's more civic involvement in this day and age than there was whenever I was in high school, at least from this part of town.
Thank you, Ms. Newsom. Okay, so our next candidate that will be answering this question is Mr. Dixon.
Are things different? Of course, things are different. 35 years ago, there were no cell phones. 35 years ago, there was no internet. 35 years ago, there wasn't the ability to do things like we're doing today. So that technology has created opportunities to do a whole lot more when it comes to educating kids and giving them access to way more information than we ever had as kids. But though that has to be harnessed and monitored because kids, I don't, anytime you ask somebody under 30-something, if they don't know, they go find out. They don't wait to find out. They go to those mechanisms that we carry everywhere with a cell phone, and they come up with answers. So that, it should make a difference in the school system. Kids are look better off financially than they were when I was in school. So there are a whole lot of more advantages for kids now than there ever were 35 years ago. I'm sure Ms. Glover will say it's a whole lot different from when she was in school if she went to school during the Civil Rights Area. So, but even though we had all the advances, like Ms. Newsom said, there are still some things that are still challenging in the school district. And there are probably going to be some issues that we're going to always have in the school district, bullying and things like that, because kids are kids. Not condoning those actions, but they don't think things out most of the time. But at the end of the day, we have to take advantage of what's newer now to utilize that and leverage that to educate kids.
Shall I start?
Yes, ma'am. By the way.
Okay, the question was, have we seen positive changes with our school system today versus yesterday? Well, I can recall when the consent decree 1981 came about and why it came about. And the effects of that consent decree, some of those remnants are still here. We know we can't force people to come to school, to schools particularly with children that they don't want to be a part of. And like I believe someone said, I think it was Ms. Newsom who said, what you sit around your table and talk about, your children are soaking it up. They're like sponges. So if we demonstrate other than positive in front of our children, then oftentimes they will demonstrate what we have given them in heart, word, and deed. I have seen the school system transform, transition, and oftentimes it always didn't help everyone, but just certain ones. The implementing of a magnet program. The program wasn't implemented to address the needs of kids that were doing well. It was because it had a purpose. And like Mr. Dixon said, I came through the Civil Rights time, where we didn't have an option. We took what was given, and that was what we were done. That's how we lived through that time. Even today, oftentimes, many schools are given and they take what they're given. They don't utilize the voices that can help them to rise above feeling inferior, to come forth and say, I need a $500 million budget. And you come forth and say, I need, but you're reluctant. Now, I do know that the principals of every school gets a wish list, and they tell what is important to their school. Now, how they operate that list and how the school system or the administration deals with it, still the voices have to be raised.
Thank you, Ms. Glover. Thank you. So now Kirsten will ask our next question to Mr. Dixon. And then we'll keep going around.
Waiting on your question. Hello? Still waiting on the question?
Let's see. Okay.
One moment.
Okay, we're getting it, buddy.
All right, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. Our next question is, what current issues or problems within our school district are you most eager to combat, and how will you do so?
One of the issues that I, that, you know, often concern me is that of teacher pay and teachers' shortages. The only problem with that, that's a problem that's just bigger than the local school district. Because there are so many different sources that fund education. Aside from property tax that funds a part of it, the minimum foundation fund, which is money that come from the federal government through the state, also funds education. And it's just been a challenge, if you will, to have enough resources to pay teachers well. I recognize during COVID, and everybody did, how vital teachers were. They were called essential workers, along with healthcare workers, janitorial workers. People, most of the time, that made the least were the most important during COVID times. I feel like if teachers are essential, then they ought to be paid as such. I think if education is important in society, I think, and if we deem that a very important matter, then we ought to invest in it like it's an important matter. I don't think that happens at any level. And I heard Ms. Glover talk about earlier when she said employees make up 85% of the budget. Well, most any budget in any corporation anywhere, labor is going to be the highest cost. And I think we still need to find room to make more money for educators because they carry heavy load, and they are responsible for us to be able to sit here and talk about these issues.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Thank you. So now, next with Ms. Glover. Ms. Glover, you're muted.
Sorry. My primary focus is to have that candid conversation with the leader of our school system, which is the superintendent. I want to know how it is that schools, year after year after year after year, continue to remain behind the eight ball of success. We talk about education to the extent, so much so that we don't talk about education. We just gloss it. We can no longer gloss it. We talk about teachers having more monies. Definitely, we want to pay our teachers adequately. But like Mr. Dixon said, it takes a lot to run a system. But we have to be better stewards of running that system financially. We live in a small, we are a large parish number-wise, but we're not a large parish financially. The dollars that you alluded to, federal dollars, local dollars, state dollars, all those dollars, if the stewards are not good stewards of those dollars, it don't matter how many dollars we get. Because if it's important today, it was important yesterday to get these educators good salaries. You know, we pay our superintendent a great salary. And he is the head of this public school system, but we're the head of him. And if we're not going to keep and hold him accountable, while we should be holding ourselves accountable, our children will not get what my constant, my concern will ever be, education success. I just cannot implore it and just impress upon us to get these children to where they need to be academically. The rest will fall in place. We just have to do our due diligence. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glover. So now, next with Ms. Newsom.
Okay, I'm wanting to get to work on a couple of things right away. The first thing that I want to try to get accomplished is a teacher contract. I know for many years, the idea of a teacher contract has struck fear into the hearts of the board members because of the idea of a strike. However, I believe that a good contract that would be, that would appease everyone, would also include a no-strike clause. I feel like our teachers are ever presented with the growing task of dealing with issues that they're not prepared for. I've mentioned autism, also dyslexia. I'd like to see our teachers get more formal training on the things that they are supposed to be dealing with on a daily basis. And also, I'd like to bring GED program back to the northern Caddo Parish area. Chances are, if you need a GED, you do not have a Raja Shri fort. That's just is what it is. And also, I want to see more career opportunity, career training opportunities for my local schools.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Newsom. So now we'll move on to our next question, which will start with, I believe, Ms. Glover. So let me take care of the stream. Okay, thank you. So now, Ms. Glover, our next question is, how familiar are you with the current curriculum being taught in our school district and any controversy regarding that?
Curriculum. The current curriculum. Because we have from K through 8th grade and 9th through 12th grade, it would be futile for me to sit here and tell you that I'm so familiar with those curriculums because that would be untrue, and that's not what I'm going to do. I have not looked over the curriculum, except for year to year to year when my grandchildren are in school. And I know their curriculums. When my children were in school, I knew their curriculums. I knew the curriculums of those schools where they attended. At the end of the day, we have to ensure that whatever our children are being taught, it is of worth. We don't want to introduce anything into our children's hearts and minds that will not be of benefit to them as they go off into this real world. We can impress the importance of education. I mean, it's all about education. It's all about having quality teachers. I heard Ms. Newsom talk about a teacher contract. So that would be a union. We would, if we were afforded, or we afforded the unions here in this parish, an opportunity to come into a collaboration whereby we would go into that conversation. That would be instrumental. That would be good. Then teachers would probably tell us exactly what it is that we are missing that keeps our children disadvantaged. Because they're in the classroom with those children. They have the intimacy of what all those children that they teach are dealing with, even if it's just, I can see it on the surface. We don't get those conversations.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So now, we'll move to Ms. Newsom. And let me give the question one more time. How familiar are you with the curriculum being taught in our school district and any controversy regarding that?
Honestly, my child is eight, and with all the confusion with his autism diagnosis and being at three different schools, and then also doing one year of virtual training because of COVID, I do not have much personal experience with it. I hear a lot of talk about Common Core needing to go. And I do want to just educate the people and say, Common Core was just a term that was used to describe the curriculum that was chosen. The state of Louisiana, the Bessie Board picks three curriculums and gives the three curriculums to the school systems to pick from. So the idea of Common Core was just like to bring everyone to a common ground of education. But I don't agree with that. I don't agree that that's actually being accomplished because everyone does not learn in the same manner. We already know that. We already know that by twenty twenty-two, we already know everyone does not learn or um, test in the same manner.
Thank you, Ms. Newsom. So now, we'll go on to Mr. Dixon.
I, I was more familiar with uh, the curriculum. And, and what I also say that I hadn't heard of a lot of controversy uh, as it pertains to the curriculum. I know that, that, that sometimes, and, and I've witnessed uh, being on the board sometime, uh, uh, national partisan politics may seep in. So there, 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 I've heard some uh, some ramblings about uh, and I'm sure everybody's heard that, which uh, that has never even been brought up. But their fears, uh, or, or this, this uh, need to incite fear uh, for political reasons uh, uh, from a national level has seeped down to local politics. I, at the end of the day, uh, national politics uh, be what they may, uh, can rest with that. But I don't think we need to let national politics uh, seep down to uh, the, the, the school uh, level. I think we need to, to be able to uh, teach what's beneficial for kids uh, to help prepare them uh, for their future. Like, because like all of the uh, people that are joining me today, every one of us agree that education is vital and a, and a, a, a integral foundation for, for children that are gonna be successful uh, as they uh, in their future endeavors, whether it be uh, going to work or even starting their own uh, businesses.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Thank you. So now, we have one final question, um, which will start with Ms. Newsom. So let me add. Okay, and Kirsten, um, if everything is all good, you can take it away.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so our last question is, how do you want to see our youth in ten years? And what steps are you going to take now to achieve those goals for the future?
I want to see our youth living not in debt like, like my generation from student loans won. Um, but I also wanna see the youth really civically engaged. I keep saying that and it's because I believe that the, the, um, as we were discussing before this, this started today. Um, in order for our future to be, um, our future world to be everything that you guys need it to be, this generation needs to step up and become engaged socially. Economics, all those type things, you have to get an understanding of how every vote that you make for every election dictates what's gonna happen for your future, every single little vote. Um, also, I'm wanting to do a, I'm wanting to create a parent advocacy group. I wanna have a couple of representatives from each school in my dis- district that have, they're not associated with Caddo Parish School Board, whether it be a parent, a teacher, I'm sorry, not a teacher, a parent, a grandparent, someone who's heavily involved with the school that has a good pulse of the community. Um, I want that person, I wanna have a couple of people from each school that will communicate with me on a weekly basis so that I can keep apprised of what's going on at school, what the actual needs are. Because, you know, with twelve thousand constituents, you can't answer every single phone call and every single email. But if you have a good idea of what's going on in your school each and every single day, then you can more effectively deal with the issues as they arise.
Thank you, Ms. Newsom. Thank you. So now, we'll hand it over to Mr. Dixon.
I'm gonna ask you to repeat question for me, so for clarity.
Sure, sure. Um, this question is, how do you want to see the youth in ten years? And what steps are you going to take now to achieve those goals in the future?
Uh, I, I understand that uh, uh, youth are, are integral to uh, our future. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm over fifty now. Uh, in twenty years, you are gonna be the ones that, that'll be here that make decisions that impact me. You're gonna be the next city leaders, you're gonna be the next doctors, lawyers, judges, what have you. And, 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 and so it's important now that uh, you're prepared to take on that role uh, uh, in the future. Uh, one of the things that I've, I've been supportive of this organization ever since I've heard about it. Uh, even when your last leaders came uh, to the school board uh, to uh, uh, to fight and to fight to, or, or approach us about voter registration. Uh, uh, my colleagues uh, talked about how good you all uh, sounded and how nice it was that you all uh, were there. But I pushed it a step further to, to, to get some action on what you all had come for. Because I understood that if, if young people wanted to be engaged on that level at your age, we certainly needed to be there supported. So uh, as a school board member, I'll continue to fight uh, uh, to help you get engaged, get involved in civic minded things and entrepreneurial pursuits of whatever it takes to help uh, give you the foundation to be successful uh, going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon.
The question was, how do I want to see our youth in ten years? And then what steps will I take in order to get those children where they need to be?
Yes, ma'am.
It's a good question. All centered around lessons taught, lessons learned, lessons brought to fruition. That's what we are about when it comes to the Caddo Parish School System. We are teaching lessons, lessons that we are hoping will be learned, they'll take root and they will indeed build that young person to be that person whereby we know our future is gonna be safe. We are indeed blessed to have you all person and um, Calvin to step forth and to share with us from time to time, your positions on issues. Prayerfully, we're listening. Prayerfully, we're instituting what you're putting before us. As a school system, we have so many kids, what, thirty thousand plus? And we're wanting to accommodate the needs of all of those children individually and collectively. When it's, when it is that we have an issue that comes from our youth, we have to be willing to listen. Oftentimes, we older folk think we have all the answers and we don't oftentimes open that door so easily to bring you in. It's time for that to stop as well. Because if you're going to be prepared, you have to start learning somewhere and we can't just do it in a vacuum. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glover. Thank you. So let me add all of the candidates back to the stream, um, and then Kirsten will close it off for us today.
Okay, first of all, I want to thank everyone, all of the candidates who took their time today to come discuss with us here at the People's Promise Youth Division for their campaign, what they think about the youth and what their plans are if they are elected to the Caddo Parish School Board. We hope to hear more from all of them soon. And you will be hearing from the People's Promise Youth Division at the school board very soon with some plans we have regarding mental health, um, regarding after-high school plans. We plan to stay engaged with the school board and in local politics in general through the fall and through next year. And don't forget to get registered to vote and visit our Instagram page at People's Promise Youth for more information on how to get involved. Election Day is November eighth. Um, and al- as always, do your civic duty and go out and vote. Um, that is all we have for this panel today. And I just want to say thank you again to all these candidates who came here today and everybody who's watching, as well as the people who are going to be watching um, the recording of this after. And I just want to say, have a great day, everybody.